I call to order the July 23, 2025 special meeting of the Board of Education of Hinsdale Township High School District 86. We are meeting in Hinsdale Central Cafeteria. The time is 6:01 PM. Beverly, please call roll. Member Greenspan, here. Member Fisher. Member Mitha, here. Member Akris, here. Member Mika, here. Member Senschwell, here. Member Waters, here. Please stand if you are able and join me for signing the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have anybody signed up, Deb?
We do.
The board will now hear your audience comments for up to a total of 45 minutes. Speakers will have three minutes to address the board. Board meetings are meetings with board held in public, not open forum town hall meetings. Board members will not engage the public during public comment. The board will keep this in mind as we conduct our meetings, allowing the public to provide input at the time allotted on the agenda to ensure that the multiple voices of the community inform board deliberations. When the board deliberates, it will be a time for the board to listen and learn from each other, taking the public input into consideration, not a time to reengage with the public. The board will consistently abide by our formal processes relating to this issue so that all persons are treated fairly and equally. Our first speaker is Linda Burke.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you for your service. It's July. I'll be very brief. I would just like to suggest that every board meeting and every committee be have closing audience communications. I sympathize with people wanting to get out of the meeting and back to their lives, but every meeting is so rich with information that a person attending might have a response at the close of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Moving on to discussion items. 3.1, District 86 Goals for 25-26. I would like to welcome Principals Perotto, Principal Wohl, API, Lomene, and thank you for joining us in collaboration with the board to discuss and determine district goals for school year 26. A draft document, metrics, targets, 25-26 were discussion posted in DDC from Superintendent Locke includes metrics that matter for the district, baseline value of each of those metrics and targets or goals for summer 2026. I'd like to ask, um... Oh, before we start the discussion, though, I just need to remind everybody, each board member, every employee of the district, each one of us serves the district, not an individual. We serve the district. We all have supervisors. The board supervisors is the community. Superintendent Locke supervisors the board. Your supervisor, Superintendent Locke. But to be clear, each one of us serves the district. Okay?
So I just wanted to kick us off briefly by setting the stage, if you will. So I wanted to just highlight that the intention of setting district goals is not to create a gotcha or anything like that for anyone, for any school, nothing at all. The point of these district goals is to set clear priorities so we can work together more effectively as a team and make an even bigger positive impact for our students. We believe these goals should be ambitious because even if we don't reach them in the end, we'll make strong progress pursuing them. And speaking for myself, but I can assume everyone else is here with me, I'm going to say, yes, the whole board, I feel, has full faith and confidence in our educators and in our students' ability to accomplish amazing things. And if we want great outcomes, we have to have these high expectations, and that starts with setting ambitious goals for us all and then working as a team to accomplish them.
You know, there's not a lot of data here for the presentation tonight. I do see the metrics and targets for discussion. I just wanted to poll the board to see if they have any sharp disagreement with my interpretation. To be brief, these are, if anything, low watermarks and not targets that we should consider unless we're disinterested in excellence. I'll keep it at that and then poll the rest of the board.
I'll just... Can we just give a little context, Barry?
Yeah, please.
I just wanted to give us a little bit of context. Member Mitha and myself met with Dr. Locke. We were advised to start thinking about strategic planning and to find a potential opportunity for consulting work, a strategic plan. And in that meeting with Dr. Locke, and please, Dr. Locke, I've been kind of missing Liz, but just so that we're all on the same page where these conversations are coming from, we did meet and we've been working in the background with Dr. Locke in terms of identifying two different things, just so that we're clear, the goals and matrices for this upcoming academic school year, and then strategic planning, which is usually bigger picture, usually up to five years. So we wanted to have a detailed conversation on the matrices that we're holding ourselves accountable as a school board, holding Dr. Locke accountable, and our school administrators accountable to the matrices for this upcoming, specifically academic, school year.
So I'd just love to ask, first, a process question. So in terms of identifying the metrics, am I correct in understanding that these were identified over the course of the school year and agreed upon by those involved at the academic committee level and the buildings as well, building leadership as well? Or can you just tell me a little bit about how we settled on these as the metrics that I wanted to focus on?
I... Superintendent Locke, you came up with these metrics, correct?
Who owns these?
So Carrie, Bill, myself, Jason, Carrie, we spent, I don't know, four or five meetings in January or February to brainstorm what we thought the most important metrics would be. And you can see those listed vertically right there, more or less. There's also a third page that highlights some of the, some of the other things we also think is important that we haven't done the work to sort of develop exactly how to account for those things. And they fell into three buckets. One about overall outcomes for students, one about academic progress, and one about student well-being. Of course, for a full district, eventually, we should also have metrics for HR and finance and facilities, and that's also listed as something else to do. So we highlighted and developed roughly what we thought, a clear way with a small number of measures, highlighted what we thought was most important. So we did that work. And we spent time in the spring in thinking about what exactly is the work we need to do this year that will either set the foundation or begin to turn the dial on those metrics. And you saw those plans last week or the week before, and we'll be ready to share detailed versions of those mid-September with benchmarks and the like. Based, when we were asked to come show you what those metrics were, we put this together and then had a series of discussions, and I asked the team, tell me what you think is a reasonable target for next year. And just a couple, a couple thoughts about that process. This is a little different than I think we've done things in the past. The previous strategic plan has five goals that are qualitative, and then key measurement indicators are listed as coming later. Here, we're beginning with those metrics that we can measure clearly and then having strategies that align to those. Because I believe in our principals and because I think schools are the center of change, we just aggregated this, so it's not a district measure. There's a column for Central and a column for South, and eventually, we'll figure out what this looks like for the transition center as well. But that's different. It puts the spotlight in different ways on Central and South. And then I asked the principals, think about what we can reasonably get done this year based on the strategies we have put together, and what would, what would those look like? Could we be more ambitious about this and more aspirational? Absolutely. These were designed to be measures that we feel confident we could accomplish this year. They're not designed to be stretch or reach goals. They're based on what we, what we thought there. But I hear you on...
Don't you want to shoot for the stars and be happy to wind up somewhere south of there? Because there's no motivation to these targets.
So I think what Member Waters is trying to say, and I agree, is that we have higher expectations of our students. We don't ask our students to just, uh... Remain stagnant, year-rear. We expect growth. We don't ask our students to not shoot for the moon, as Jeff would say. We do. Academically, socially, emotional, in terms of maturity, all of those things. So Superintendent Locke, you just, you mentioned a couple of times that you started working on these in January, February. I don't understand why we had to call special meetings in July, twice, actually, to go over this. If these were created in January or February, that's one. It's unfortunate, right? Because we could have also given our building teams, which the bulk of this work is done in the buildings, we could have given our building teams a lot more time to plan based upon board direction and board disposition. That's a little bit unfair. So does everybody feel comfortable going over the metrics right now?
I'd like to hear from the rest of the board and their interpretation of these numbers presented.
So I can add another follow-up. So, you know, I heard, I think, you and others say you want to look farther down the road than one year and that taking, looking just one year ahead is not giving the full view of where we're headed. So, you know, I'd like to see us, in addition to refining these, have three-year targets and then have one and two-year working up towards those. So we have a sense of where you're headed beyond this coming year for where our students are going to get. And I understand that there are a lot of things that you are putting into place this year, looking at the, you know, the draft building plans that you are working on. And I understand that the first year, there might be incremental growth and, you know, increasing growth over year two and year three. But just looking at year one, it appears that we are okay with just maintaining where we're at. Some of these numbers are quite high and good as, you know, as they are, right? I think we should be proud of a lot of these metrics. There are others that we should be less, more concerned about, less proud of, and to say that we're still okay with maintaining those areas is concerning. So I think that to see these metrics come out is pretty much maintaining across the board, and in some cases, actually being okay with a number slightly lower than where we're at right now. Unless I have a better understanding of where you see us accelerating in year two or year three, this, out of that context, is disappointing to say that we're okay with where we're at. I think the metrics and the targets, or the targets and the goals for where we want our students to go, the expectations start at the top, and if we don't set a high bar, we are bound to be disappointed. I would rather see us aim high and miss than aim low and make a target that we should be able to make easily, it seems, given prior data. So that's what I meant.
Yeah, I... I think when we had this conversation, like all we talked about, recognizing just in terms of, uh... You mentioned the concern of like, what's that delta, right? And, um... It's, it's a... I do want us to think more strategically of increasing the percentages across the board. I do think that there is, as Mary said, so I'm kind of in agreement with Mary, but perhaps a little bit even more. I think that based on the academic evidence and where we are as a district, I believe that we can, the matrix are not representing us accurately. And, you know, I appreciate Liz, as we said, that this isn't meant to be a gotcha. This is kind of coming up with, what is that sweet spot? It's like, I presume that, you know, if we don't attain it, and there's evidence of why we don't attain it, we get that. This isn't going to be like, we're all fired here. I mean, it's just not looking like that. We all understand complexities of school systems. So I'm echoing what Jeff said. It's like, let's just put in, obviously, we're not going to put in parameters that are not even attainable. I don't think that's what Jeff is saying. I think what we're trying to say is that we can have a more robust, make those percentages be more reflective of our context, which genuinely is really important to us.
Okay. So my perception is at the moment where it happens in the building. In fact, almost all of it does. District admin oversees, but they don't have. So we have hard data from Central and South, but what is not reported, and I have spoken about this for many, many years, even as a community member, is there are a lot of soft relationships that are built in the buildings that the data, you know, we really don't have hard data on, and that's very important also. I am relying on you. I am not, this is not a gotcha moment. I am relying on you for your two-plus decades of experience each in your building. And Kurt, you have been in the district for two-plus decades too. Yeah, Central and South. I am relying upon you to provide your feedback and your perspective so we can set, um, what Member Mitha has called reach goals. We could set the bar high with the board, with me as a board member individually understanding. We not, might not meet all of the goals. We might meet some of the goals, but we also have to demonstrate how we're tracking growth year-over-year. Um... And I apologize. It is unfortunate that we did not start talking about this in February, or March, or April, or May, that we're here with our second special meeting and two meetings in June, and we just received these metrics. That is a shame because all of us could have been working really hard for the last couple of months together, and that is highly unfortunate. Baron?
A few things. Number one, I think, in terms of the, you know, year-to-year goal, looking at 1% difference as a goal, I wonder if that's, if it's based on what we're thinking the best we can do? Because that's, that's what I would probably be leading toward, throwing a goal out there that's, like we said, aspirational, but in the realm of, if there's a range of what we think we can do, putting the goal out there is, you know, the best we can do, because that will actually lead to, just human nature, that will lead to better performance. So that's one observation. 1% is kind of, you know, that's an ACT test, you know, that's a, that's a handful of kids getting up, you know, on the wrong side of the right side of the bed in the morning. So a little bit bigger delta would probably maybe feel more comfortable. The other thing is that we're measuring proficiency, so that's, that's kind of one metric. So we're not, we're not necessarily measuring every single cohort with that, so we're just looking at how many more people are getting above a certain level. So, you know, our responsibility is basically to every single kid, so we want to make sure that we're setting goals and metrics that are measuring growth, appropriate growth for everyone, all up and down the spectrum, if that makes sense. So if you're talking about proficiency, which is incredibly important, if not most important thing, we also want to talk about the kids who are maybe not getting the proficiency but made huge strides, or the kids who are already at proficiency but are maximizing their potential. So I'd like, I would love to see, you know, that so that we're making sure we're addressing all kids, as opposed to just one, you know, one thing that we're working on. I like that there's, you know, discussion about some of the other ways of measuring things, like exploring creation of metric to represent student excellence in our high schools. It's, it's a tough one, you know, those kind of like, those, you know, big buzzwords. How do we get, you know, how do we measure that excellence? How do we measure rigor? So I, you know, I want to see, you know, stabs at that, you know, I want to see something concrete on that for sure. So those are, those are, those are some of the, some of the observations that I had of it.
Can I ask a clarifying question? On your second item about growth, your, the first bucket on academic outcomes does mention stats, the percentage of kids who meet and cross a threshold. The... Sorry, sorry. The first bucket is all about stats. What percent of kids are crossing various thresholds that are there. In the second bucket, it is about progress. We display year-to-year growth as the percent of kids who are making expected or more growth on various SAT measures, their grade degree. We could also, as we did in the academic committee, slice that a different way and focus on kids in the first quartile, second quartile, fourth quartile, if you're more concerned about different levels of kids showing that growth. I'll note that we have very few students in the first quartile on national scores, so getting a significant change in there will be a little bit challenging, but that's an option we can do. I hear you on wanting to measure growth of all kids. I think there's, that's already baked in here, but there's different ways we could tease out metrics to do that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Thank you for, for clarifying on that. One thing I forgot to mention. So in terms of what we use for measuring, and I kind of touched on it a little bit as well, what, what other metrics do we have besides ACT, ACT standard test scores for addressing some of the goals that we have? What else, you know, what else do we have? What else can we...
I can answer that.
Yeah, please.
So we have year-over-year. Our, you know, the reality of it is, is our district is data-rich, and I'd like to talk about that so that everybody can see. It's only public data. It's the report card data. So if you go to the Illinois Report Card, I ask each board member to do this. Go to Google, "Illinois Report Card," and you're able to search by district, by campus. So search Hinsdale, and you can pull up Hinsdale Central or Hinsdale South, whatever you would like. And then whichever school you pulled up, click on academic progress. The last year that is public and reported right now is the school year 24. And then click in the upper right corner, custom report card builder. And you can see that you can choose 24, school year 23, 22, and 21. But to minimize the amount of pages on the report, just choose 24. De-select all, and then only select academic progress, and you can generate the report. And you will see, when you generate the report, it'll appear in your downloads. Go ahead and click on it. And depending upon which campus you chose, you will see all of the data on each student's by grade, you know, match individual students, the general data that the district reports every year. So this is our data. We report it up to the state. This is a way to understand all of the different data that we collect on a student. Right? So what you're asking for, Baron, is spectacular, and in fact, we do have it. And we need it reported up. But it has to be accurate.
Yeah, that's, that's very helpful. I'm wondering, you know, having a good discussion about, you know, some of those other metrics that I feel are a little bit richer. It might just be my bias because I think that standardized test scores are, you know, have their pluses and minuses. Let's put it that way. But I would love to talk about that.
So I had actually a really, I was deeply upset when I saw these numbers. All of these, we have great numbers in so many cases. And then, you know, having been a teacher myself, I look at these numbers and I think, every place we're not 100%, there are kids that are not there yet. And we want to make sure we're serving every single kid and meeting every single child. And so I personally, I wasn't upset at all about where we are. I think where we are is wonderful, and we can improve. I am more, I am deeply upset by what felt like a real low ball and low expectations for kids. And knowing that we have talked about wanting to be the best district in the state, we have got to really work together as a team and set big goals and be ambitious and support one another and ask Dr. P. and Mr. Walsh what they need to make these things happen, how we can be supportive. So I think that starts by putting a big stake in the ground and saying, like Jeff said, we should shoot for the moon, and if we don't get there, yes, cheesy, still among the stars, right? We need to do that for all of our kids because every one of these is one of our kids. And so saying something like, oh, we're at 98% freshmen on track at Central, that is awesome. Also, it's not bad to say, let's try to shoot for 99. Will we get there? I don't know. That's really hard, especially when you get to the top of that level, but we should try. We want to try to get every child there. And so it makes me honestly really nervous to see a metric that says at Central, we want 95% for better, for freshman on track. That is a decline in expectations. And yeah, so I could go on about this for a long time and want to be mindful. We have, all of us at summertime, we want to get good stuff done, and we want to support our team to get wonderful things happening. So I just want to make sure we're really putting ambitious goals out there and collaborating as a team to make it happen. So can I just, I'm sorry, can I add? Okay. I appreciate Liz, your comments, and you all know that I've been in this, I eat, breathe, and sleep this stuff, literally, eat, breathe, sleep in this stuff. And I appreciate where we're at, but quite honestly, I've been in this community for over 25 years. I followed this district very happily. If you want to talk about my, like, crazy, high committed education mom, when my oldest was starting schooling, I was driving him for six years to Morgan Park Academy from Durin, Illinois to Chicago because I was so committed to high academics, not because I didn't believe in my local public school, but because I really understand and was committed. And all of my three kids have taken different education routes. So quite honestly, to me, I know where our school district has performed back all the way in the 90s. I'm not trying to age myself. I just hit my 50th year, but I know the caliber we have, and I know that we can get back into that. I am so confident that we can get back into that. So quite honestly, it's not that I'm disappointed. This isn't my judgment. This is understanding again the context where I'm at and understanding what is really possible. And so as much as I appreciate Liz, you saying that you're, you know, it's not about happy or not happy. It's about what is attainable and is there a realistic understanding of what is attainable? And I'm pretty confident, I know that I understand what that is, just of being someone who's been in the field, who's been in the community, who's had my own three kids. And so my question is, in looking at the school report card, is how did we come up with the 1%? Can I get someone to answer? Like, how did we come up with the 1% as the delta?
Wait, can we, let's talk about each of these individually, okay? And then we'll talk about the delta in each. So can we start with under academic outcomes for... So can we start with under academic outcomes proficiency English, which is the spring 2025 ACT Classic? So the board hasn't seen the ACT data or the report. So I would like to understand first from Bill and then from Keri. 83% in proficiency in English, or if, did you guys go over that data? Or did district admin put this? Mike, is this you? That 83% baseline and the 61% baseline?
That is our current performance on the spring ACT, on the ACT report.
So just so I understand this. You put this in, not Keri, Mike, the baseline?
I went with help from our Director of Data Analytics and our IT folks and the Illinois Report Card and filled in those first two columns with our current data.
Okay. So just to be clear, our Director of Data Analytics started July 1st or thereafter. I just, I need to know that these baselines are accurate. And we have not seen the spring 2025 ACT Classic report or data. We haven't seen the AP 2025 preliminary data. The only data that we have available to us right now is the 2024 Illinois Report Card data. And I'm not sure that building admin has seen any of the other data either. And that's why I'm concerned about these being baselines unless we are certain that these are our, this is our actual data, because we've had some data issues, which will be another discussion when we're done with this. But assuming that these are accurate, proficiency English, spring 2025 ACT Classic. We also have the fall 2024 pre-ACT data on our students. Is that correct? Yes, yes. Did we consider taking the fall 2024 ACT, the pre-ACT data, and measuring the growth from fall to spring and then setting benchmarks accordingly? How did we come up with these, not benchmarks, the targets? How did we come up with the targets?
I think that's where we need to start. Can we just get a, on this conversation, on how did we come up with these values? How did these percentages come up? And how did the delta come up? What was the work behind that?
So the current data is, the report that it's from is listed there in parentheses. Some is from the report card, some is from our preliminary AP data, some is from our spring ACT results. We did share district-wide results at the academic committee. These are the school breakdowns that we have here. And you can see the other citations for those, or the references for those in parentheses around, on each of those rows. That's where the two current columns come from. Principals then worked, and I helped, and their teams helped, the teams that are here this summer, to identify what those targets are. Bill and Keri, want to talk a little bit about the process by which you did that?
Wait a second before you do that, please. I apologize for interrupting, Bill. Can you forward us the ACT data, the reports right now, so the board can have them? I asked for them earlier. The report comes as one package, correct? Who did it come to? Jason, you, who did it come to?
Came to Jason.
Okay, somebody has to have access to it. I would like that raw data sat in all of the reports so that we can make an informed decision on all of this. This is, do you not have it?
I do have it. I asked to get it generated for you this morning when you asked. I wanted to fully redact it so you can see all the full data as you asked for.
What do you mean, fully redacted?
Get rid of all personally identified information.
The board is entitled to the full report, Mike.
So just to be clear, you're asking about the proficiency scores, the composites? I mean, we're not asking about individual students. We're asking about, what are the proficiencies for?
We can get you that, we can get you the school-level reports. But it wouldn't have any personal identifying information?
No.
If you want the supporting data, but if you don't want that, we don't have that. No, we don't want that. Okay, great. We can do that.
So the data, it shouldn't be the raw data, though. There's no manipulation. We can just see everything as it came from ACT. I don't want admin to interpret it, not Bill, not Keri, not Kurt, not Chris, not you. We want the flat data so we can interpret it ourselves.
So back to the 1%, Mike, how did we come up with that? You guys want to talk about that?
Sure, I'm happy to talk about it. Bill Walsh, Hinsdale Central, just if I may give my story, a little clarification, and make sure we're on the same page with what I understood. I concur with much of what Mike said regarding the categories on the left and the metrics themselves. We've been discussing post-January, we had multiple conversations. Regarding the data in columns three and four, Mike shared that data with us after the board meeting and asked us to come with metrics for it, to set some goals.
Which board meeting?
January, July 8th. And then you sent the email that we're going to have this meeting and have some goals, right? So my only point on this, I should have asked more questions. I'll leave it at that. I didn't know, I'm interpreting things, and I thought, honestly thought, we were looking at, Bill, we're going to measure you on, here's what you were, this is what you're going to be compared to next year. I am more than happy, I am more than honored, after nearly 30 years in this district, going on 28 years in this district. Have a, and I tell everybody I hire, why do you stay at District 86? Because the expectations of our students and of our parents is extraordinarily high. And with that comes a great amount of teamwork to achieve those things. I am honored to set higher benchmarks. I interpreted this meeting about comparing me, honestly, from last year's numbers to this year's numbers. So I did, so if that was a poor interpretation on my part, I will own that. But I am more than honored to talk about numbers that could be a lot higher, that we can work towards and achieve. My staff is honored, honored to be teaching the students that are seated before them because they believe in the expectation those students want to achieve. Because they want to work towards their ideal future. My staff is more than willing to put their foot and their hand in that pot to get them where they need to be. I only set those metrics, I'll be honest, probably out of a little fear of interpretation. But it was not meant as a backward step for District 86 or Hinsdale Central Red Devils. It was not that. I'm more than honored to come up and give you some different numbers.
And I appreciate it, and thank you, Bill, for saying that. That's exactly why I think I said what I had to say, because I know that, we know that. So this is not meant to be, this really is in all sincerity of us collaborating, we are all on one team to make things better. And it, there isn't, you know, and I'm sorry that you thought that way. It's really, you can see, I'm starting to cheer up because that's to me, but honestly, I know I'm a public protestant. I won't even say it, I need to keep myself calm. But I just think it's really important that we're recognizing this isn't meant to be, as Member Blinta said, that we're not an adoption group. We're just trying to come up with what is really attainable, knowing the context. Again, I'm going to keep stressing this word, context. The context of where we are at, the resources that we have available, the capacity of our teachers, the capacity of our administrators. I believe we all know that these numbers can be much higher. And not meant to be saying, you do the T and S, so shame Google on you. That's, and I will hold myself personally accountable. If that comes to me, then you can talk to me on one-on-one. Because that's not where I'm sitting here, and I'm pretty confident that none of our colleagues are sitting here for that.
I also wanted to jump into, because I know Principal Walsh said a lot of "I" statements, but him and I sat at the table together, so I don't necessarily want you to say "I", it was a "we". And again, Keri, Dr. Keri Parente, Principal at South. I very much agree with Bill that we looked at it the same way. We looked at it for the summer. When you're looking at the chart, summer 2026 target, where are you looking to be one year from now? So it is, we both viewed it as, if you are currently here, where are you moving to? Absolutely, I would love some percentages to be for South in the 90s. I would love to say 100% freshman on track, right? That is, of course, the ideal goal. But we were looking at our current percentages where we were, where we look, where we think we would be a year from now. To Member Statual's point, should we be looking at one year, two years, three years, five years from now? You know, where do we want to ultimately see our buildings or districts going? Yes, of course, we want to do that. We would love to do that for our buildings. But I want to make sure that I'm clarifying that when Principal Walsh is saying "I", it is 100% of "we". I do not want him to be just in the "I" vote.
Okay, so can I just say one thing? Yes. I am honored to be on this board and support the work you're doing. I'm just taking Bill's word, honored, but so thrilled to support you. And I just want to apologize if the intention of this was not being clear. That was not at all what we were looking for. So I just want to apologize if this has caused you undue stress. It's not that. I see this as, we need some culture changes, I think, at District 86, that we are a team, we need to be working together. And so I'm hopeful that we will start feeling this way more, that we're, hopefully, that we're more trusting of one another going forward. I know there's a lot of historical context here, and many things have changed over the past couple of years. So I hope you know that we are here to support you. We are on, we are definitely go South, or definitely go Red Devils, we're all over it. So just thank you, and again, I'm so sorry if we made you feel that way. We did not mean that.
So Bill, Keri, as one board member, I need you to understand that it makes me teary-eyed so. And this is why I have complete and utter trust in each of you. The bulk of the work for our kids, the bulk of the work supporting our staff, captains in the buildings. And you have been doing it for each of you over two decades. And frankly, Kurt, I throw you right in there, right? So I wish that this wasn't our second special meeting in July discussing this. I wish we had started discussing it back in May, but we didn't. And Superintendent Lock, I need you to know that I hold you responsible and accountable because it's very clear that you created this document. And it's really important for every administrator to hear what the board is saying, what the board's direction is, to understand. And if you need clarity, Bill, Keri, Kurt, Chris, Superintendent Lock, ask the board. But this gave you guys the wrong impression. And you worked on this after numbers were already filled in and you provided feedback based upon direction that was not board direction. This is not what we asked for. And I wish that you didn't spend time in July doing this because I know you're preparing your buildings to get ready. So that we're all on the same page. I just need to understand, or I need clarification, and I need for you to tell me that you understand, please, please, that we're looking for reach goals here. And we understand that not everybody's going to get there. And I had a discussion, oh, you know, a couple of weeks ago or a week or two ago, about this data. And when you look at the report card data, you see that the students are reported in different cohorts, right? We can do the data and the goals specifically to the buildings in those cohorts so we can make it very targeted for our kids and our buildings. And that is how we're going to be the most successful. And frankly, our teachers have been delivering every year for as long. So I started following the district and the data in 2004, 2005, before my, I was still pregnant, waddling around here. I will tell you, year-over-year, our teachers deliver, our year-over-year. So the growth in our student populations might be different. Might not be the same, I'm sorry, Linda. Might be slightly different. But our growth is remarkable for our kids. And it is on the backs of our administrators, our building administrators, and our teachers, period. I know we can do this. I know we can. So if we could, we could just go down this and set reach goals. But I also want to make sure that these baselines are accurate. So we'll set the reach goals based upon these baselines, but then we'll also go over the data to make sure that the baselines are correct. Is that fair, Bill, Keri? Are you comfortable?
Yes.
And then Mike, after we set these reach goals, we're going to need to know from you how you're going to support the buildings with this stuff. So proficiency English, spring 2025 ACT Classic. We haven't seen the data, so Kurt, can you help us out? Come on, Kurt.
Kurt Monami, Assistant Principal of Instruction at South. I have seen the data. I can confirm, these numbers are consistent with the data that I have seen.
Okay.
For both Central and South, for the ACT spring scores? Thank you.
Okay, so then, Bill, Keri, the summer 2026 target, what would the reach goal be for each building?
Started with proficiency English, is that what you wanted to say?
Yes, please.
Again, moving away, I would say that 90%, I'm looking at proficiency rating 90% of my English.
That's right, bring your phone, Bill, thank you.
Your kids can do it.
Yep, Keri? For South, I would say 65%. Moving on to mathematics, Bill?
I said 80%.
80%?
We can talk about it if you'd like.
Keri? Proficiency reading?
I said 80% again.
Okay, Keri?
Also 52.
Proficiency science?
This one I actually struggled with because I didn't know, like, we're comparing ISA, right? Where we've done extraordinarily well over years. And then we got this number from ACT, which I struggled with. So I don't know how to put a number here. I did, I wrote 70, but I'm not, I actually, I'm looking historically, the number should be even higher than that, but it's a different test, so I'll be honest, I left it at 70, but I just wanted to leave that.
70 or greater, is that fair, Bill?
That's fine.
Okay, Keri?
43.
Can I ask you a question about the ISA, is that a test that students continue to take?
No, it was when we were doing ISAT.
Yeah. So graduation rate, that's from the 24 report card. Bill?
I kind of want to put 100, but I know that's never going to happen. So I put 99.
Okay, Keri?
What?
That percentage has been pretty at 94.
Yeah, we hover around 95, 96, 4, 5, 6. But wouldn't it be great if 99% were?
And this is, just to clarify everybody, this is the four-year graduation rate. Keri?
Similar, South hovers usually around the 85%. I would love to say 90. Again, if we're talking reach goal, I would say 90.
Okay. Just with regards to graduation rate, it would be great. If you look at the custom report, it's reported by demographic. I would love for you to come back at some point to help us understand all of the academic outcomes and the progress by demographic, show us, tell us how we're effectuating change and supporting our kids in all demographics. I want to know.
Okay, can I just add to that really quick? I would say in particular for the students who make up, you know, for example, if we're at 85% for graduation rate, what are the demographics of the 15%? You know, who are the students that we are really trying to make sure?
Just to clarify, a question on graduation rate, does this, I feel like it does on the Illinois report card, it counts the Transition Center students who are still continuing on with us. So I just wanted to make sure that I was correctly interpreting, thank you.
Which is why I don't get 100.
That is correct, and that usually predominantly comes out of the South's number, which also affects the 85, it affects both buildings. But yes, that's why the 100.
I'm sorry, Liz, will you repeat that, please?
Sure. So students that are at the Transition Center do not count as quote-unquote graduated in our numbers, because they are continuing on with this, with us. So if we given them their diploma, then they would be graduated, but then they won't be able to be at the Transition Center. So attaining 100% graduation is not possible unless we have no students going to the Transition Center, and we are blessed to have a great Transition Center that families move here to attend. So there is a tension there with the state-reported data and the fact that we have a wonderful program for our students.
But what, could you, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, I think that's something that we could talk about. You know, we talked earlier about if this is the goal, right, I'll speak for South, if 90% is the goal, but we did not reach the 90%, and here is why. We can show the data of, here is X amount of students who went to Transition Center, here's X amount of students who did not graduate for various reasons, so we can bring that data forward to show why 90% wasn't reached.
I see exactly what I was going to ask for, Keri, thank you. Thank you, Keri.
If they are counted under South's numbers, because the Transition Centers are housed in an intended area, or why?
They're counted under South, they're counted homeschool.
Okay, where the students homeschool, thank you.
There are 17 students retained in the same grade at TC from Central, and 23 retained in the same grade at TC from South for the 23-24 school year. It's roughly the same number, but because South has a smaller population, it has an outsized impact on that.
Thank you.
But all 40 of those students in that example, they're all still the denominator, which is why we wind up there, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so depending on the number of students that matriculate after senior year into the Transition Program or the Adult Opportunities Program, it really hurts the board of graduation rate, which was why there has been so much discussion about continuing code, legislation in the bill, because we provide such an extraordinary Transition Adult Opportunities Program, the district, both each campus, is actually penalized, because we have kids from each campus going into the Transition Program. Am I wrong, Keri Smith?
I just, you know, I think there's, I agree in everything that you said in terms of the great Transition Program, I just, the word penalized is kind of, that's a hard word, but you're right, it does have an impact on the graduation rate.
Can you give me a new descriptor, please?
Hey, Keri, there's a warm seat right here.
Yeah, come join us, Keri, come join us.
Are you serious?
Yeah.
Come on, Keri.
The problem is, Keri, you can't make contact, and you can't smile at the board, because it'll have you come up.
I honestly thought you were going to call me up earlier, so...
Oh!
I was just waiting. Yeah, I mean...
Thank you. Impact, but you're right, I mean, there is a definite impact effect on the graduation rate, which is why, if you all recall those conversations in the past about how we were working to try to change that, that hash change, it's just slow rolling that out, so we still do see that impact on the graduation rate. Thank you, impact. Okay, so post-secondary credit, 2025 preliminary AP, Bill?
Yeah, this is another one of those numbers that I think both schools have been working extraordinarily hard at in terms of getting access to AP dual credit and other things, you can talk to our donors, and other things, that I think we've worked extraordinarily hard over the last couple of years to create those opportunities for our students, and create the rigor, and maintain extraordinarily high rigor in all of our classes. I also want to think a little bit, if I had more time to think about it, I really would have liked to look back over the years, what percentage of our students are matriculating to college, and aim at a target that's closer to that. And I think it's, I want to say it's closer to 88% that are going off to college year over year, so I'd like to put that 88% here, but I don't think realistically I'm going to see 88% of my kids enrolled in AP or do a credit class as it's currently structured. And we can talk about some things I don't want to talk about right now, I know you do that, but...
Oh, come on, Bill.
No, I'm going to blame the department with two S's in it, there's a conversation around that.
I understand.
But, so I wrote 80, but in my heart, it's 88, because that's the number of my, percent of my kids that are going off to college year over year, if that makes sense.
So can we settle on 85 or greater?
I'm happy to settle.
Okay. And this is students who have earned a three-year better on an exam, or who have, yes, okay, just clarify.
By graduation, one or more.
Thank you.
Keri?
So there's been an increased push at South of having our students enroll in AP classes. We have seen the highest number in recent years of students receiving a three-year better on their AP score, so I would put our number at 55.
Thank you, Keri. Keri P. Okay, so we're moving to academic progress, freshman on track?
And for my benefit, can we talk about the metrics that make up freshman on track? I know grades are a piece of it, but there's additional metrics that are embedded under this.
So, Bill, do you want to do that? Or do you want me to do it?
Well, I'm just going to read it from the school report card. Freshmen on track, students identified as on track, every year have earned at least five full-credit courses, 10th semester credits, and have earned no more than one semester F in a core class, English, Math, Science, Social Studies. Course credits for summer sessions are not included in this calculation, and ninth-grade on track is a key predictor of high school success, and Keri, Dr. P, and I both truly believe that. And students who finish ninth-grade on track are almost four times as likely to graduate high school as students who are not on track. And I just was going to say, research shows the number of students on track and the graduation rise, grade rise, when schools actively intervene by identifying freshmen on track, providing tutoring and additional instruction, and other individualized social services. I do want to note that this is something we don't have students who read out loud in class anymore, because I just fumble over and over there, but just note, just...
Thank you very much.
But I think you did great. Okay, so what do you think, Bill?
I wrote 100%.
Okay.
But I do struggle a little bit, I want to make sure we're balancing, it's talking about classroom grades, so I don't want, I'll be honest, you can't end up with all these phone calls, any kids to pass, the kids have to earn that, they need to earn. And we're talking about all those things as well, so...
You can't take advantage, sorry, Bill.
I know, I said it out loud, on the board and...
It's memorialized on the report. Keri?
For South, I would say 95%. You know, there's a lot that goes into the supports that we provide academically, and also behavior and socially, emotionally, so I would say 95% for South.
Thank you. So year-to-year growth, grade nine to 10 EBRW?
Can I just hop in here? Yeah, I found this very, first off, these are awesome, you guys, I just want to stand up and cheer, but I will refrain, but just looking at year-to-year growth, I mean, I actually had a question of whether it would make sense to say we wanted an average of a certain number of points on the composite ACT here instead. It could be the wrong metric, but I'm just trying to pinpoint, these are all kind of nebulous and hard in a lot of ways, because this says right now 86% at or above year-to-year expected growth. I don't know, would love to hear your thoughts on that before we go through.
So the, here's what the numbers represent, so the College Board provides for the SAT tables that correlate one year's performance with the next, and norm that against all the kids who took the test. What that 90% represents is that means 90% of the students who took SAT in ninth grade and then SAT in 10th grade either met the expected growth amount. Remember, a student at the bottom or the top, it's going to, the bottom may grow a lot, but at the top end of the distribution probably won't grow that much, they either met the expected amount when compared to the national or exceeded that.
So just a quick question, so does that mean someone who is a high, a student who's doing, who did an excellent job, maybe they get a .2 percentage point bump on, when they're up at the top of the distribution, and if they're struggling at the bottom of the distribution, maybe they expected to get a two-point growth? Is that, does it take into account where these students are?
It accounts for that, and compares that to what the national...
Got it. Okay, thank you, that makes a lot of sense.
And I'll just sort of be back. One of the things we talked about at the Academic Committee back in fall of 2024 was that we are showing kids are growing a lot, they're probably not consistently growing enough to catch up, and so we need to think of new systems and structures. If you're coming in two, three grade levels behind, you're going to need to spend more time in those classes and more time doing that work to catch up. So we're working to figure out how to operate on that.
So I really appreciate you bringing this up, Liz, thank you. And I just need to say out loud to our buildings is that we have our students a wide range of ability and achievement in each of our buildings, right? We also have a wide range of growth, and I'd like to congratulate all teachers across the district and student services, that would be social work deans, to understand that we, so each campus has high-achieving grade level and below grade level students, correct? As Liz pointed out, we might not see the same growth delta in the high-achieving students, but it also requires great commitment by our building staff to continue to push them to grow. We have kids that come in at both campuses years ahead in math, like years ahead, right? We also have kids at both campuses and some of, you know, that are going to come in well below grade level, and their growth delta is going to be much greater than a high-achieving student, but we need to celebrate all of our students' growths, no matter if it's what seems to be a small amount in state standardized reporting, or it's a very large amount, and that is fundamentally due to our building staff, our teachers, our student services. And again, I need to say this out loud, and I do not, I want to make clear, my observation in 20 years observing this district, it is on the backs of our building administrators, it's on the backs of our student services, our deans, our counselors, our social workers, and it's on the backs of our teachers. It's through all of that support that our children, our students grow and succeed year over year. Thank you. So are we, Liz, do you want them to, can we set a percentage right now and have them come back with a different way to frame the, these year-to-year growths? Metrics?
I'm not the expert, so I defer.
Something that we also just want to mention too, this was the first year that we moved to the ACT, so the data that we're looking at right now is SAT data, so we don't have the year-to-year growth yet, so it's difficult. It was difficult for Bill and I to sit there, and, which is why you see that whole area is just clumped in one big square, right? Because we just weren't sure how to measure something that we don't have a comparable to yet.
But we have the fall of '24, pre-ACT data, and then the spring of '25 ACT data. Can't we take that growth measurement from there and develop the baseline?
Yeah, the only concern I have with that is that's within a year, and we're not necessarily, we haven't necessarily targeted interventions at that point. A lot of our interventions are based on the spring, previous, so I'm struggling.
It's October and April.
Yeah, yeah. It's hard to do.
So optimal... It's better than none.
Yeah, optimal comparison would be spring to spring. In the absence of spring to spring, is there any useful information for you, for your teams, to see the growth from fall to spring? Or not really?
I don't even know, probably is, because I'm going to assume, we know what that means, that a lot of the students who are below grade level or above grade level, right, in the fall, are probably the same from spring, right, in the previous grade level, and would probably have some interventions already in place for them, but I don't want to, anyone just say, I'm not sure I want to use that metric, I don't know what the metric is, I don't, I...
I don't want to send anybody on a data mission for fun. I am honestly just curious if there is anything useful to glean from comparing those within your assessments.
Can we at least take a look at it? Just to understand what it looks like? Yeah? Yeah, that would be great. But assuming...
And then the other piece was, so this spring there was the ACT Classic, and next spring it'll be the ACT Enhanced, right? And do we expect that there is some comparison concern between the two scores, spring to spring, at the end of next year?
We are concerned about that.
Yeah. Can you tell me, I mean, so are we, we're saying, we don't have good data, you know, for this year, we may not have great data next year, what can we do in terms of growth measures to understand?
Sorry, Mary. This is why, I think for me, the first part of the academic outcomes, you need the academic progress that's going to feed into the academic outcomes. So personally, as one board member, I'm much more satisfied with what we originally called for the academic outcomes. I think the academic progress is going to need a little bit more digging in, because of the fact that growth, the data, everything we're talking about right now makes that segment so much more complicated. But I'm confident, because we're shooting for the academic outcomes for those percentages, that's going to impact the academic progress. So personally, I think we can give a little bit more time or leeway for this part of the metrics.
So would it be agreeable to the board for Bill and Keri and Kurt McCress to take a look at the growth between fall and spring, and then think about what you feel like your baseline should be, and then come back to the board, say in August, because you have all the ACT data now. So come back to the last meeting in August and give us the baseline, and then the reach goals would that be? I know you're a little bit busy right between now and the first meeting in August.
Okay. I think that's ideal, I mean, my sense, but I would also say, I totally agree with Hasma, that with these big goals that are being reached for, there's going to clearly be a lot of growth that's happening to reach these, so I also am mindful, this is a tough time of year, you guys are running, running, running all the time, that I don't want you to have to spend a lot of time on this either. So if we don't get that information, considering the short timeline, I'm personally okay not having a growth goal this year, this is, don't let perfect be the enemy of good, if needed, here.
Side question, ACT, I read an article, I thought I generally read that all, hold all things equal for a student, ACT, students tend to perform just a little bit better on the ACT than the SAT, is that fair? Does that sound familiar, or is that way off base?
I would say, I would say I've heard that, I can't speak specifically to a study that has been done like that.
The reason I bring it up is to Liz's point, maybe we just keep all the numbers constant and just be done with it, you know, make 90, 87, 79, 92, keep them all status quo. To put a, to wrap this point perhaps, like asterisk assumption.
I guess I would say, in lieu of that, because we are talking about ACT versus ACT, what you've got, 86% of our students being at or... ACT, that what you've got, eighty-six percent of our students being at or above expected growth isn't a bad growth goal. It's just what we've got for now, right? So I mean, I think it's okay as is until we have a little more data to work with.
No, but I would say, I think, if I'm hearing you, I get it, but there's, I don't, I don't know why I'm saying this. We want all of our kids to grow, right? So what's the problem with putting 90%, right? You want all of our kids to grow. But the problem is how do we measure it then? That's the concern. But I think we both, all three of us, all four of us, because now Carrie's here on my right side more, that we all expect our kids to grow. So say 90, 95, whatever. I don't wanna, I don't wanna leave this room and say, Bill and Carrie, Kurt, Carrie, Chris, don't want to grow, that's not my kids.
No, that's what I heard. No. But Carrie, here, with regards to this growth, this may be a great way, moving forward, for you guys to take a look at the reported data and understand the demographics of students and where we're going to really push and provide as much support as possible.
And then one last one on this, I know other districts are dealing with the same transition, so what are they using for growth goals?
We can have, we can have that conversation with our, with our cohort, our colleagues. We don't meet with them until September, but we can have that conversation.
Thank you.
Okay, so are we gonna leave the baseline the same? And then we're gonna do the goal at 95% just up and down for everything? No, I think Carrie Smith is saying yes.
I would not.
Okay, so you'll come to, come back, right? Okay, so we're moving on to equity journey continuum. Can, can, so this is just remaining flat? Is there a reason why, are there, so the equity, the EJC is a consideration of multiple different pieces of data coming from the district? Is there a reason why we feel like we're gonna remain the same? Carrie? Because this is, this has to do with discipline stuff too, right?
Student learning has to do with student performance, access to AP courses by various subgroups. Learning conditions is attendance, discipline issues. Elevating educators is about teacher qualifications and teacher licensure. There's a complex formula around all of those. We are close on the learning conditions to move from moderate gaps to minimal gaps. But predicting exactly how that will go would take a lot of work to dig into that.
But we could, our reach goal could, would be to move from moderate to minimal, right? So can't we just say that out loud? Minimal across, across the board.
This is one that is not only happening in the buildings, right? Because this involves a lot of things that are district-wide as well, especially with the learning conditions and elevating educators, right?
No, I mean, you know, our HR department is the hiring, but buildings do the selection, and, you know, minimal gaps is the highest rating you can get on this, so we're doing great on elevating educators. Learning, learning conditions about discipline and attendance, which is also fundamentally in, in the schools.
Okay. So we're moving all three of them to minimal gaps. Okay. So student well-being, percent of students indicating connectedness, spring 2025 panorama, that's the data that I think Alex put up on the website, correct Alex? Yep, thank you very much. So you're just saying better than where we are right now.
Okay. I'm gonna go back to that. So I think for both buildings, a sense of, a culture of belonging, a sense of belonging, positive professional relationships is a key focus of both our schools this year. And it is not something we have specifically measured. It's part of surveys that have been out there over time, panorama, five essentials, things of that nature. But it is something we're targeting more specifically and put some resources behind the buildings. So I think both of us, having given a different opportunity to present numbers here, have some different numbers to present. And I think mine would have been, central is closer to 95%.
Again, bring your fire, thank you Bill. Carrie?
I echo what Principal Walsh said, I would say 90% for South.
All right, South, Ryan, we got this going.
So quick question, if that's a pan around data point, we can't control who submits, and it might be only a 50% return, correct?
Right, but I think that's what I'm talking about, is this year it is a focus or goal that both of the buildings are doing with the help of Dr. Smith here, and, and asking different questions and specific responses. For example, a survey might be given to Billy Walsh, it says, Billy, who is your trusted adult on campus? And Billy's gonna give a response. And if Billy doesn't put anybody, we're gonna put a lot of resources into figuring out why Billy doesn't have a trust in research. And then when they, they're gonna take it a second time in the spring, and hopefully Billy will put somebody else on it, because Billy needs some help.
Because eighty-five, eighty-five and eighty-one could be skewed down if you sometimes subscribe to the theory that those most concerned or who are complaining, they love to fill out surveys, and the satisfaction place in May not, right? Okay. Which explains your, your future forecast, right? Jeff, actually, our student panorama response rate is pretty high, but we don't, it's anonymized data, so we can't tell what Billy Walsh says. This year, we're, we're gonna plan to do it a different way, so we can figure out if indeed it is Billy Walsh who doesn't have a connection, and then smother him with attention.
Also too, I mean, I think we, we've talked a lot about central and south, and rightfully so. A lot of these metrics don't really apply right now to the TC, but this metric does apply to the TC. So not to put you on the spot, but would you, I mean, do we wanna set a goal for the transition center too? I, I feel very much that we wanna include our students there and our staff there as part of the goals. I looked it up, and the transition center, I think was that 85% of students there were feeling connected to an adult?
It was 88.
Eighty, eighty-eight, sorry, I mistake. Eighty-eight percent? Do we wanna set a goal for there too?
We absolutely can. I think that, you know, in, in looking at where we were before and how much we would probably increase, I would be, I'd like to perhaps suggest a 92. And I just also wanted to mention that this is the panorama data, and we will be using, we're hoping to use panorama again, but what Mr. Walsh was talking about was a different way for us to identify student connectedness. So if we, there's gonna be different tools, so I just wanna just add a little caution in, in looking at those percentages when we come back together again, just noting that we are implementing this a different way this year, and so we might have a little bit more data to look at this.
Yeah, you'll just come and explain, right? Yep. All right, so moving on to percentage of high school students that participated in two or more clubs, activities, or sports.
Yeah, and I feel like I keep anticipating on these things, so, sorry, I'm giving my stories here. This is a college and career readiness indicator, and we are a firm believer, having our own, or at least my case, my kids all go on through high school, and I think we both graduated high school too, that we participate in high school, it makes a huge difference, because there's a passion and a love and a, and bringing your fire for your school, right? I do struggle with this number though, I, I don't know what the number should be. There, we're already talking about, in Hensel Center I talked about, there are huge, high expectations for form extraordinarily well in the classroom. And with that comes a lot of homework, a lot of anxiety, a lot of stress, test prep, a lot of things going on. To ask every student to be involved in two or more clubs or activities is a lot, especially at a varsity level, by junior or senior year in sports, where we see, I think this year I had three students perform on three, like, fall, spring, fall, winter, spring sports. Doesn't happen as much. But they do one sport in a club, that seems reasonable, but again, I understand, student, especially junior, seniors are making really choices for themselves between jobs, service in their community, athletics, clubs. So I don't know what the number should be here. We had 54, I think that's a number that probably, if I look back and had, had time to look back over time, what that number was. I wrote down 60, but that's pretty ambitious. I'll be, in the back of my head saying, it's probably a pretty ambitious number. That shit's gonna be closer, somewhere between 54 and 60. I don't, I don't know if I'm gonna hit 60.
So, but we can set it at 60?
Sure, we can, we can achieve, we can, we can hope we can have students, 60% of our students join two or more clubs, yes. Because if I can get all my freshmen to do it, it might offset some of my seniors, right?
Carrie?
And similar to what Principal Walsh said, he was talking about stressors that, that our students can have. We have different challenges itself with being a smaller enrollment, but still offering so many different clubs and sports and, and everything for our students to do. Our students wanna participate in all those things, which then they wanna do all these things, because we have a smaller enrollment to do all those things. So there's, there's different stressors for sure. I, my, my reach is 55%, but I, I think to having half of the student body be in two or more clubs is wonderful, for all the reasons that Principal Walsh said. But again, I, I think we're gonna live around 50, but the reach would be 55.
So given the fact that you mentioned it would diminish interest to do two or more, I'd love to see the data point, and you may know it roughly, of probably, given what you said, what's most important, which is at least one. And I bet you that's markedly higher, which is probably, given what you're saying, you know, these are hovering around 50.
You also think about two, I'll use athletes for example. A lot of, I have younger children, and they, I sign them up for everything, right, to find out where their passion is, where their niche is. As a student gets older, they usually find what they're interested in, so maybe they're not involved in all those things that they are freshman year, maybe they're a one-sport athlete because they're really focusing on that for post-secondary, or they're very into theater and they wanna be a thespian, right? So sometimes, to your point, sometimes the students do just choose one because they wanna focus on that one and not do two or more.
I'm actually gonna push this a little bit here on this matrix. I have not personally seen any research or data talking about, is this because of sense of belonging? Is it like the higher clubs, the higher percentage of students being one or more, there's more of a sense of belonging? Is that correlation? Because I haven't.
I think, yeah, I think the correlation is that when students are engaged in the school through clubs and activities, or sports, that then they're committed to their academics and their, and their work in school. I think that, that's what they're trying to, college and career readiness, that sort of concept.
Okay. Thank you. My concern is just, like you were saying, this, the social, the emotional, the stressful, right? And I would argue that this has actually dropped over the past few years.
Yeah, I, I think it's really high freshman level. This is a message that I'm very confident Dr. Pirano and her team does, and I know we do at Central, when we're meeting with our rising ninth grade parents and our surprising ninth grade students, is talking about getting engaged, getting involved. When you walk in that door on August 13th, you are ready to sign up for a club, you've already tried out for a sport, and you have a plan that maybe if you didn't join a club or a sport in the fall, you're doing that in the winter and/or the spring. So, because if you're involved here, you're gonna find this big place much more enjoyable, and you walk the halls with a sense of pride and belonging, that this is my school, this is our school, and we're gonna do great things.
Well, on both campuses, we promote that to our eighth grade families the year before. We do that on the first day of school, and having fairs and activity and athletic fairs, so the students can do that literally the first day when they walk into the buildings.
Great. And now we're on our last metric, percentage of students who are chronically absent, or chronic absenteeism. Which, for the record, I think is a little bit the metric, the way that the state calculates chronic absenteeism is a little bit problematic to me. Put that out a little later. But my question to you, so, so we're actually wanting.
Is it 10% or more of school days missed, is that it?
And it counts both excused and unexcused recurrences, which is by the junior and senior year when kids go on college visits, and all, you know, if they're, participate in high-level sports, they're going state cup qualifiers, sectionals, just, you know. Anyhow, so we do wanna see this metric actually decrease. What are, what's your reach, Bill?
Yeah, if you ask the classroom teachers, this is, of all these numbers here, this is probably the one that hits the home, it is closest, is the level and the volume of students missing school. It, it's troubling, and I know we're gonna be, both schools are making a push, some of our attendance handbooks this year, to get students in school. We need you in school, day in and day out. If you're missing 18 days, you miss a day of school every week for your first semester. That's crazy to think about that. Every, you miss a day of school every other week all year. We would not accept that as employer, and we can't have that character trait continuing when our students are driven here. I'd love to see the number in single digits, I don't think that's gonna happen in, in even a two-year period, so I set my number at 15% right now.
So for South, we have made decreases over the past few years, post-pandemic. You know, we were as high as, I believe, 25, 26%. We're now down to 23% pre-pandemic. We were at 16, I would love to say 16, but I know we have ways to get there, so I kind of cut the difference and said 20.
But we're gonna do our best to get it in the single digit.
Yeah, we need this number down. This is, this is from a principal to parents, please send your child to school. You know, my dad said unless you were throwing up blood, you went to school, but I don't need that, that's not the issue I'm looking for, but we need you in school.
Real harsh, Bill.
So is my dad.
Okay, so we have set the metrics. Deb, do you have them all? Deb Kudrowski? Did you get all the metrics, the reached goals?
I got most of them, yes. I'll just check if you, you saw you were writing as well.
I was writing as well. So Superintendent Long, I would like to know how you are gonna support our building administration? And I hope it's not in the form of multiple meetings.
It's not that. So what we've started to do is build out work plans for each of the, each of the projects that you've heard from the schools about. There's a similar set of those projects for the cabinet. And we will identify benchmarks on those for every quarter, and be able to report those out to the board and to the public to show what our progress is. And in some cases, when there's not progress, we'll describe what the hurdles are and how we're trying to figure things out. And my job will be to help those principals monitor those plans, so we are hitting those benchmarks, and move resources and bureaucracy around so they can do the work they need to do.
Thank you. So what I'm hearing is building administration, you need to let the superintendent know the support that you need to implement your building plans. Right? Yep? So it's based upon your experience in your buildings, your students, your employees, and your campus community. Your plans, right? And Carrie, you'll do it for Transition Center, right? Okay. Does anybody else have anything else?
I just wanted to add really quickly that this is, this is kind of a bit of a fly-by-night process, and we're just kind of, we're running with it, we're building the plane while we're flying it, et cetera. So just wanna note, there's some really big things that we're not setting goals on, like, we don't have goals right now for staff, for staff development, we don't have goals around safety right now, or finance facilities. I mean, my hope is that as we're working on revamping and updating the strategic plan, we'll get those, but I just don't, I mean, our staff is so important, and our, our team is where the heart is, right? So I just wanna name that we're gonna keep working on that too, but we're just not there yet. Unless you guys want to set goals for that too, I mean, that's a big ask. So to me, I think we're good for now, if you guys are good with it too.
I mean, but maybe you guys can think about it, and maybe in August you could bring some suggestions on. bring some suggestions on staff and security, right? Buildings, at the building level, what we can do is support our staff and ensure a safe learning environment, which is actually defined by code, right? So we're, we're only supporting and enforcing school code, right? We have to have a safe learning environment, which means a safe work environment also for our team. Okay. Anything else, guys?
I would just say, to that point, another option I think for that is to incorporate climate, staff climate, student climate into one of our options for a superintendent goal, and then overseeing that throughout the buildings as well as security being part of an operational facilities goal that our superintendent can oversee within each building. Just another option.
Yeah, we can, I think it's best for the buildings to develop, but then we could talk about the end of August, right, when we set the superintendent goals publicly. Is there anything else? Okay, thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I need to thank you separately.
The board would like to thank you very much for the robust discussion of district goals. I know it's uncomfortable, but hopefully this will be an annual thing, right? And we can start the process much earlier, like in the spring, so that if there's any discussion. But now, at least you understand what the expectations are. Again, it was never a gotcha. It was always in support of you, our building teams, who are first line in support of our kids. You and your team alone hold the key to our students' success, to our students' growth, their sense of belonging. We believe in you, we trust you. That's why we brought you here, okay? As we finalize goals. Yeah, thank you, thank you. As we finalize goals for the district and the metrics and targets that will monitor performance toward these goals, it is important to revisit the district's policies as the board directs through, through policy. So Policy one colon thirty, School District Philosophy, Philosophy, sorry, contains the district's mission, vision, and our belief statement. This policy is included in Press Issue one-one-nine for a five-year review. Policy one colon thirty cross-references Policies three colon ten and six colon ten. Policy three colon ten, Goals and Objectives, provides an opportunity for the board to give the superintendent a picture of its vision for the district by identifying goals, progress, expectations, and desired results.
Oh, yeah, you just thought we needed an ATM for parking.
Policy three colon ten is designed to contain goals for which the administration will be responsible. And now Policy six colon ten, Educational Philosophy and Objectives, includes a list of objectives for the district's educational program and a list of the information and data required in order for the board to monitor whether the educational program is attaining these objectives. I'd like to ask, with the board's support, Policy Committee Chair Lee Cott to examine this, these three policies, put them on the agenda for the next policy meeting, so we can make sure, based upon our discussion, all of these policies align with our discussion and our direction tonight. Does the board agree, Liz?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Do the rest agree? It's okay, we'll call another meeting next week, so we'll see you then. Okay. Yeah, funny, not funny. District, or three-point-two, District eighty-six data, I've asked the board to join in the discussion of District eighty-six data to inform and ensure community of our commitment to providing complete and accurate data to support the district's goals and initiatives, which really support our students and our employees by building. My main concern, and I would like for the board's input on this, is we cannot put out data that is inaccurate. We have professionals in place to handle data, so that would be IT. We hired, we went from a point four FTE, a district data person, who used to be Kirk Bonamy, still here, but now the API itself, to one point oh. So we need to ensure that the integrity of our data is intact. I would suggest that it is not appropriate for administrators to manipulate data. Would you agree? Yeah. Until we have it in place, there shouldn't, there should be raw data sets reported to A and O, our A and O committee, and they can go over the raw data set. We've had too many mistakes. Baron, do you agree?
Yeah, of course. Do we want to talk about maybe an explanation of what, you know, what we saw happen? Would that be helpful, or?
It would be helpful, but let's go around. Usman, do you agree?
I agree, Principal. My, I think what we need clarification on is, is, you know, data can be interpreted, right? So I think that's the question we're having, is that when we're looking at raw data, how are we interpreting it? What are we, what are, are we agreeing on the variables and the matrices of interpretations? That's where I think we are now currently.
But we can set those. But there's a difference between interpretation, because an interpretation should be able to be replicated. You should know exactly how you got to that interpretation based upon the manipulation of the data, be it pivot tables, any of the formulas that are generated. We are not there.
Yeah.
That's the problem. Jeff?
I completely agree.
Mary?
Yes, and I'll just add that, you know, in understanding the different data sets that we have and all of the different ways we can use them to understand our students' experience and our students' needs, I think that, you know, I still have learning to do, and I'm sure others do too, in how we can mobilize them effectively and accurately. And so, you know, I, I would, I would like to think that there was no effort to manipulate in any kind of nefarious way, but just simply maybe for lack of understanding of how to effectively use these different data metrics as well, or data sets, data capabilities. And so I think, you know, I look forward to seeing really reliable data that we can feel confident about, that's open face to the public, and that our, you know, increased investment in this, in the form of data achieved, will help, help us get there.
All right. Baron, are you, would you like to explain, would you like to go through that discussion that you mentioned? Would you like for me to do it? Would you like, or it's up to you?
Just wanting to, like, you know, multiple, you know, multiple sides of, you know, the story of what went down, so that there's, there's often a reasonable explanation for that, and we're gonna make sure we get to that, because it might appear out of the good service. So that's, that's all. Just wanting to hear, you know, your perspective on, on what happened there.
I mean, I can talk a little bit about it. Look, you know, it seems that at the May nineteenth A and O meeting, we, we had some slides that didn't have all the necessary information on them, and, and thus came to some conclusions that may have been inflated. That's on me, I'm happy to own that. We've spent a bunch of time, and Member Fisher has been helpful, to try to figure out what happened and what the truth is. Not entirely easy to do that, as we've got, we're pulling from multiple data sources and trying to connect some pieces, but we're working on it, and I'm looking forward to reporting that out. And I've, you know, I've emailed with some of the community members who rightfully complained and said, we, we gotta do better, and we'll work to do that.
I think that there's a couple of things here. So our data is housed in multiple systems, right? We have Infinite Campus. Kirk Bonamy, help me out here. What are the systems that the data is housed in, please? So everybody knows.
Well, we have data in Infinite Campus. We also have data that we're pulling from Department of Studies.
And SIS still, or no?
Uh, yeah, we are.
So, so it may be helpful, it may or may not, Kirk. If we hire a consultant that's able to bridge the systems, so they actually talk to each other, because this is the problem, where, this is my understanding of the problem, and please, we're pulling data from three separate systems, and the fields, the columns, the labels don't all match. So then we're trying to kind of this with the data, and it will always be messy, and it's not okay for it to be subject to an administrator's interpretation, which is not. We have to ensure, guarantee the integrity of our data, because an administrator can make a mistake unintentionally.
Okay. This is the multimillion-dollar, like, educational project, that I completely agree with you, and this is one of the biggest struggles that school districts have, is that they have varying platforms that create varying data outcomes that don't speak to each other. This is what I was keen on, what I suggested, is that, Principal, the raw data has to be there. But then the problem is, is exactly as you're noting, and I don't even know if there is, and Kirk, please correct me, I don't even know if you bought it, Chief Data Analyst, like.
So are the backends all SQL on all of these systems? So an Infinite Campus is SQL?
Correct.
Student Information System, is it SQL?
I believe so.
Yeah, I think so.
I'm not a programmer.
It's run by the state.
So.
Like, cold-balled.
No. But the whole point is, the data that we receive from the state, from SIS, is, is it delivered, comma delineated, how, how is it delivered? So my point is, we can build a separate bridge via SQL to attach the data together, right, and not have it necessarily housed in Infinite Campus. I'm sure Keith's team, or Keith's team can do it, and then that would make the systems talk to each other and the data all reconcile. So we're not trying, so what we're trying to do is here's IC, and here's the other data, and we're trying to make it match, and it doesn't match, right? So it has to match, and it cannot be, you know, forty hours of an administrator looking at spreadsheets, trying to reconcile it and clean it up. That's, it's not a good use of anybody's time, and the data does not necessarily come to us then accurate. There's no way to ensure the integrity.
From my experience working in other districts and, you know, board in other districts, there are companies that took this for you very effectively, and you can customize reports so that they merge all of the different data systems that you have access to effectively so you can save your administrative time.
I agree. And then they can actually develop.
They forecast by one of their softwareers.
A, a public dashboard with all the data, and then it could, you can make a board dashboard by epidemics and all of that other stuff. So yes. So we will work with Josh and Keith on trying to get a consulting group, at least bid out the project. Does the board agree? Jeff?
Well, I, I do. I'm just wondering how we, as a board, how do we know who owns the data, if you will? Not proprietarily. Who owns the process of calling, interpreting, and reporting back data? Is that, is that Keith? Is that Kirk? Is that the new data hire?
You're talking about multiple processes. So Keith owns the data to warehouse the data, the hardware, the programming. He pulls the data and gives it to administration. In theory, the new district data person should be the one manipulating, letting, slicing the data. I'm not sure where she's at right now, and I don't know. But there is a learning curve.
I'm just wondering, wouldn't that person, that new hire, have the promise to find that software, that consultant, if you will, which is really more, or less software, to incorporate into the district's data?
That would, that would be the person supporting the data. So that would be Keith.
Got it.
Because it's systems talking to each other, it's backend SQL, because it's going to be likely written in SQL.
Okay, if I, if I can just add as anything. I think, I think there's also a couple other things going on with our data that we should be thinking about. So in addition to those systems, we have a lot of data on spreadsheets on people's computers, and it's really hard to pull all that information and do the reporting around that. And so creating and building systems and software, you know, purchasing or developing software products to help make tracking of student interventions or other things is also part of where we keep running into trouble. There, in my opinion, there's also just some work on pretty technical level data literacy that people need. Just two weeks ago, Keith and I went back and forth a bunch because there's a field called Active, and neither one of us understood what that field meant. We thought it meant it's a course active, and it turns out it's a way to determine if a, if a particular student enrollment was active in a course, or if that student had been dropped, and it was messing up how we did some reporting out. And neither one of us quite understood what that meant, and had to go back and forth to figure that out. I suspect throughout, you know, I believe throughout the organization, we all have a lot of learning to do about what our particular data fields mean and how they are reported, how they are put in, and how they are structured. Another example, as we're finding with our A and O committee, we have multiple different types of course codes. We have course codes for courses that are one semester long only, and we have course codes for courses that are one semester as part of a pair only in the first semester, and ones for courses that are part of a pair in the second semester. So our data structure makes searching and sorting cumbersome. So there's some data structure issues we will have to build out over time.
So I think we'd like to talk to Keith about it, right? Because he, Keith understands the backend, and, you know, frankly, Josh does too, because just even the business office systems, which is different.
Operational version, academic.
Yes, yes. And also, I, I don't think what we're talking about is software. We're talking about having SQL, a programmer build a bridge between the different systems, which is wholly different. Yeah.
And they, they can generate, you know, customized reporting for whatever purpose you want, and then the role IC of the, within district staff is to mobilize that data and support staff in using that data to support students.
I'm hearing, I'm hearing you guys say two different things, so I'm sorry, maybe I'm not, I'm misunderstanding. Kat, I'm hearing you say that we need an expert person who can have these analytical data aspects to have, to make sense of them talking to each other, and then Mary, you're saying they're very software, they have to do that, so.
No, she's not saying they're software.
It's people, it's, there's companies that provide, they synthesize multiple different types of data for districts.
Oh, okay, that makes sense. Sorry. No, I, I just, I misunderstood, I thought you said they're software, and that's why when I said that would be the multimillion-dollar question. Or is it software? You're talking about bringing in data analytics types of folks.
Kat, it's not data analytics. They're actual programmers, so it's SQL program.
Oh, great, I'm sorry. Yes, great, yes. Okay. So it's not data analytics.
No, I appreciate it, thank you. I appreciate the thought. I just don't want for.
No, I got administration to be.
No, no, no. I don't want administration to be confused.
So the board will work with Keith and Kirk, right? Kirk, you'll help us, right?
Of course.
I volunteer, too. And whoever couldn't like, and Joey to figure out how, and, and of course Josh, to find somebody to create the bridge, because it's, there's too much room for error. to create the bridge, because it's, there's too much room for error. Misinterpretation, misunderstanding, and we cannot, we cannot put out data that is not able to be replicated and reconcilable. We simply can't. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Okay, great. Can we move on? 3.3, just board committee support. We're just a few weeks away from the start of the '25-'26 school year. As students return to the classroom, the work of the '25-'26 board committees will officially begin. Academic Committee, first meeting is Monday, July 28. HR Committee, Tuesday, July 29. Policy Committee, Monday, August 4. Financing Facilities Committee, Monday, August 4. A&amp;O Committee, Wednesday, August 6. To support the work of the board committees, I would like board direction and feedback, build consensus. It's really important for board chairs, from my observation over the last few years. It's for board chairs to work directly with the cabinet member that is supporting that committee. So, that would mean HR Chair Mitha, you would work directly with Jody to develop the agenda and make sure everything is reported properly. And of course, Jody, you would keep Mike in the loop to let him know what is on the agenda, but that would also free up the superintendent's time to do superintendent things and not be at every board committee meeting. And that would mean you, Baron, would work directly with Deb Kudrowski on developing the policy committee agenda, right? And that would mean you, Jeff, would be working directly with Josh on FNF. And Usman, I think you really should work, because a lot of the academic stuff is happening in the buildings, you should work directly with the APIs and the principals to make sure everything's on the agenda. Mary, you're going to work directly with Dr. Smith?
Yes.
On PTAP. Does anybody have any questions? Does the board support those? Is the direction correct? Yes. And that would mean board committee chairs, you are responsible to work with board recording secretaries and the backup of board recording secretary to make sure the minutes are accurate and reflect about what happened in the board committee meetings. Moving on to consent. So, just so we're clear, does everybody understand? Does cabinet understand? You will work directly with the board chairs on the agendas?
I want some clarity, if you don't mind, Cat. Because of the fact that we don't have an assistant super for academics, that means I would be working with four individuals, right? Two principals, two APIs, depending upon the agenda item. So, here's the thing with the academic committee, because previously it was myself, Dr. Locke, and Jason, right? We were always working together to come up with our agenda. So, here's the thing with the academic committee. It's just my observation, being on it for two years. We discuss a lot of things that we didn't have to, and we didn't discuss things that we should have. You should drive that, and you should note that, based upon your experience, and I know you do, and I know you have a lot of conversations with administration on what the agenda looked like. And a lot of that work happens in the buildings, so then just work with the principals and...
All right. Then you should give me that feedback, like, not now, after two years. I mean, I would have appreciated that feedback of, like, what should the agenda look like? What are we looking for? Because when we set the agenda, we set it up for the school year, the academic school year, which we shared. We didn't...
At the beginning of the academic committee, the agenda that was set by the superintendent and Jason, we didn't follow it. All right. We can talk about that off and get a little bit more clarity and direction in terms of how to move ahead with that. But my concern is to juggle four calendars is going to be a challenge. So, I will set the time.
So, you will identify the principals and the APIs, and they will make themselves available unless there's some type of a crisis. It's once a month plus month. One. Two, you have to drive the agenda based upon the deliverables that the board wants. We did talk about it multiple times, and you talked to administration multiple times, and they pushed back multiple times and insisted that the agenda remain the same. Let me be clear to the board committee chairs. They're your agendas. They're board committees. If it's a superintendent's agenda, then the superintendent can set it. These are board committee agendas. Period. No more, no less. So, either that or else, you will be accountable for the stuff that's not being covered. It is that simple. We cannot continue to move forward this way. We cannot. Is there anything else?
So, we, I'll just throw out that it worked really well today at Financing Facilities. Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong.
Sorry, Deb, I didn't mean to. You also are always in the meetings. I apologize.
Oh, I know. I know.
Thank you.
I know you'll find me when you need me. We have added a recommendations and next steps agenda item to the close of our committees, kind of like quietly behind the scenes, and then I've been putting it in the template now as I'm getting ready to build out. I think it's really helpful to actually give that look ahead at the next meeting for all the folks who are there, but also for the chair and the cabinet representative. And you could do a three- or six-month lookout in the beginning and then just revisit that each meeting. So, it'll help minimize the coordination of schedules and time, and it'll have an opportunity to do it at the end of each meeting if time allows.
Great. Is there anything else? Moving on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda items consist of items that are routine in nature or that have been discussed with the board and are now presented for approval. Any item may be pulled from the consent agenda for further discussion and consideration. All items on the consent agenda are approved with a single motion unless removed before the roll call vote. The Financing Facilities Committee reviewed the Americas Healthcare Staffing Agreement at their meeting at 4:30 PM. Chair Waters, does the committee have a recommendation for the board?
To approve, yes.
Can you speak?
To approve, yes.
Okay. So, does any board member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for further discussion in a separate vote? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So...
Motion Waters, is there a second?
Second, Satchel.
Motion Waters, second Satchel. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Member Greenspan?
Aye.
Member Mitha?
Aye.
Member Akris?
Aye.
Member Leacock?
Aye.
Member Satchel?
Aye.
Member Waters?
Aye.
Motion carries six oh. May I have a motion to adjourn to closed session for discussion under the exception 5 ILCS 122C11. Litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting, as well as 5 ILCS 122C1. The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who service independent contractors in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or a volunteer of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, a meaning to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with this act. May I have a motion?
Second.
Second.
Akris?
Motion, Satchel, second Akris. Is there any discussion? Please call roll.
Member Mitha?
Aye.
Member Akris?
Aye.
Member Leacock?
Aye.
Member Satchel?
Oh, aye, sorry.
Member Waters?
Aye.
Member Greenspan?
Aye.
Motion carries six oh. The board will now adjourn to closed session. The board will not take action following the closed session as detailed on our agenda. Thank you.